Moving on to the regular agenda. Discussion and approval to advertise ordinance 1175 to create a four-way stop at Sharon and Norway Street. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Mr. Anthony Lutz.
Chair second.
All second.
Mr. Booker second. Any discussion?
Um, yeah, so I, I believe that this particular intersection will be a, a, a problem once, um, Legacy Park opens, I know. Um, we've had communication that it's, you can't enforce it until there is a, um, proper traffic study done. Um, however, I don't, I mean, to the point, uh, that they made it to last meeting, I've got, I can't get on my head of the idea of like, if you don't put it there, what, where do I need it at some point? You know what I mean? Is there any way, like, Chief, I guess this is a question directly to you. Um, do you find it severely problematic to have a four-way stop there and not be able to enforce it right away?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, how long would it take you to do this study?
I don't have an answer for that, Councilman, but it, just to elaborate on what Council Booker asked me, um, first the signs go off and then the calls come in if people are not stopping for the stop signs. So once that starts happening, we could keep it down there, but we couldn't enforce it. I mean, we'd have, we could put there a link and, um, we just cannot enforce that stop sign in that direction.
Got it.
So.
So I read through, um, the, what was sent by, by Chief today and what, you know, warrants a stop sign and what doesn't, and that a stop sign is not a speed control thing. And I have, and I, prior to reading all of that, I was like, we're gonna put the stop sign in and we gotta put it in today. But after reading what Chief said and then I also went, um, there were some references made in there about, um, traffic calming thing, right? What do you use in place of a stop sign to slow speed to calm traffic? Because that's not what stop signs are for. Stop signs as that, as the, uh, as what I read today is for right of way, not as speed controlled. So anyway, long story short, I'm thinking to myself today, something needs to be done because it's only going to get worse as buildings are built and, um, buildings get open in Legacy Park, right? Apartment buildings, townhouses, multifamily homes, whatever. There's gonna be a lot of traffic coming out of there. So I looked through the booklet on traffic calming, whatever it's called, I don't know. Weird to calm traffic, but anyway. One of the, one of the things was putting in, this is gonna make you happy. Putting in like, like a medium, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, just in the middle, like coming out of, coming out of Legacy Park onto Norway, making a little, like, somewhat entrance way into another neighborhood, right? So you're desolating, you're leaving this neighborhood, you're coming into this neighborhood, there's pedestrians, there's bikes, there's cars, and a medium with what, I don't know, grass, flowers, whatever.
Little bird.
There you go.
Yeah.
Couple of.
And they have those, that's what's gonna be transformed in on, uh, Legacy Park Drive off Market Street and also coming in out from Allendale. It's, there's only one that says different classifications of the streets. The collector streets are the main streets that go through. Those are the ones that are required to put in the boulevards and stuff like that. Norway Street is not a collector street. All right. Um, one of the things that goes a whole way back to the very beginning of the approval process of Legacy Park was, one of the things that was said was it's gonna be a shortcut to go from Market Street to Allendale Road. It, it's not gonna be a shortcut because there's parking on both sides of the street. The streets are narrower than what they are anywhere else in town, um, especially in that area.
I noticed that.
And there's also the way that they turn, the, the circles, there's, there's more traffic calming devices in there to slow the traffic down and make your time longer than what it is to, to.
Right.
Basically go the collector routes. So the traffic, to do a traffic study now would be a waste of money.
Correct.
Um, once phase three and potentially phase four is done, towards the end of next year, it may want a stop sign there. Um, but I think you're gonna see, um, the kindergarten academy is gonna generate traffic, um, and the people coming out of Legacy Park to go, the kindergarten academy is where you're gonna get probably a good percentage of your traffic is gonna be generated there. For the other sides, they're gonna be going to Market Street, they're gonna go to Allendale, you know, so I don't know if they're gonna go into the neighborhoods as much as what a lot of people think they might. So, um, of course, they do have the drive, the bypass too, so, um, you know, there's, there's different things. It's just we have to be looking for that stuff as we have it as presented itself.
Right, right. I mean, I totally agree that something needs to be done, excuse me, it, now instead of later, like, you don't want to wait for something to happen until we're like, uh-oh, there's a problem. So, I don't know.
Would it be possible to amend the ordinance and then not put up the stop signs until the traffic study was completed later? I'd rather have the opportunity, is that not a thing?
Well, I think it's, I think we could, we could advertise the ordinance, but wait on the adoption, you know? So is, is that be possible, so, so, Council, to advertise the ordinance, to table it until the study is done?
Yes, it's possible, but it surely has a practical narrative, question of how soon could a study be accomplished? If we're looking at, at, at years for build out of phases.
Then why not?
I would suggest not advertising.
Question from Manager Sizerzki, what's involved in a traffic study? Is it still in our form? Is it doing three weeks worth of counting hours? Is it?
I'll defer to expert on the, on the matter, Mr. Redolsky. Council, we, yeah, there's actually a specific form, uh, the PENDO has, it's just like a three-page form, uh, for multi-way stops. It's not a really in-depth, we, we use this term traffic study universally, but it's actually a different kind of line, if you will. So this could be done fairly quickly, but, but, uh, Solicitor Kathy's pointing out that it may, may not check a box, which then ultimately would mean, at least at this point in time, that is not warranted. optionally, there is a program called LTAP, if anybody's familiar with that, it's a, a collaborative program between PENDO and PSAP. Um, we just happen to also be their engineer. And basically what it is, is PENDO have money that they fund certain types of safety and other types of studies, uh, for, for the municipalities. So what, uh, the borough could do is apply to LTAP. Um, there's only so many units available in a given year, but there, there, it'll come out near the end of the year, so there should be some units available, if not now, in the near future. That would also look at traffic calling, you know what I mean, in terms of, okay, what else could be done in a quarter or all the way from, say, uh, maybe kindergarten academy back to Legacy Park, um, and whether it be medium, chicane, you know, if you saw ahead what's going on, you know, there's, there's twelve different options and they all present themselves a different way, so, um, but yes, the study could probably be done pretty quickly, I guess, is at least the, the short answer to the question, but, uh, in terms of whether or not that's really what you want to accomplish, you know, there's also studies out there where you sit before a stop and people get frustrated and they stop at the four-way stop and they go faster in the segment beyond. Um, so it's, it's almost like, uh, shooting yourself in the foot by just throwing up a, a stop. We had this to be, what was it, five, six years ago, or May or what, I mean, like, you know, with the same kind of issues of, uh, perception of speed, you know, where is variable speed versus, um, what you think it is, because a lot of times it's speed a lot lower than it actually would be perceived to be in the environment. But the only thing that controls speed is, is physical geometry changes, it's not, um, signs or, um, you know, enforcement does help at times, but it doesn't help.
And the cost of the study?
So, so LTAP is free, um, the state picks up the cost.
And would the board need to start fire to, to explain LTAP to them?
Um, do you have this team you own by coming to that fee? Is that a good effort? Uh, maybe like fifteen hundred bucks or something like that, if, if we did it, but once again, it can be done at house, it doesn't have to be done by an engineer. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just feel like we're not gonna get the right answers from a traffic study from an outlet of a development that's not done yet.
I, I agree with her.
Like, I feel like we're just like, you know, a team in the wind.
And unfortunately, you made it so that you don't wanna wait until something happens. The, uh, the reality is with traffic, you have to wait until something happens. I mean, that, that, that's part of a warrant analysis is, it means the historical data to show crashes, injuries, all of that kind of stuff that goes into that warrant, so, um, you know, there's other studies out there that take this place slap on the four-way stop and they actually create some level of risk, um, familiar risk, because they fly through, you know, people, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, custody balance is a very common issue, very common, um, in discussion points, especially in boroughs that have, you know, this great high street power.
To, to any of the, um, stakeholders up here, including Chief, are there others? Is there other signage that we might be able to put up just to raise awareness of children in that vicinity that can be utilized in lieu of a four-way stop sign at this point?
Yeah, yeah, there's children playing, I've seen there, there are regulatory style signs, but they're not something that, there are forceful, but those are, you know, as long as you get to put up and make it be seen a little bit.
Manager Sizerzki, are there other types of signs the borough can put up?
Mm-hmm.
At what level, what cost?
They, they have to meet the, the state requirement for signs, but, you know, we can get those signs put up, yeah.
Do you have an estimate on what it would cost to put a sign up?
I haven't looked at those particular sign prices.
I can tell you that other municipalities typically, like, all in, you're talking about three to four hundred dollars with a breakaway mounting. That includes like, that definitely includes a staff time that's typically.
What's the accusation? Did, did you identify another issue with our ordinance that we should deal with? You know, if we, if we don't go this route, if I recall, curtains. There's something about four-way stops and the language of the ordinance?
Yes, yes, there is some language in the existing ordinance, um, to be cleaned up, so to speak.
Would you suggest that we do that separately from, from this, or is it not, not a big deal?
I, I think it's, it's, it's sufficient, uh, sufficiently, um, significant to, to justify moving forward with clean language.
Okay.
So.
Does that language clean up the little dirt ordinance?
It is.
Could we authorize you to advertise the ordinance without the addition of the four-way stop at Sharon and Norway?
Yes, I would, an appropriate motion to drop the age to do that.
And we don't need an alteration of the ordinance to put up children playing or slowing down or.
That's correct. Those are regulatory, uh, signs that can be installed without, uh, formal action.
Right, thank you.
And if they're used to be placed, um, in a similar location that might be able to be used for, as a stop sign should, indeed, be, be permitted, yeah.
Sorry. Uh, there's, there's new regulation placement sets where they have to be, so we'll, we'll make sure site distance and all that stuff has to be met, so there's a lot that goes into it before we can just, well, start putting signs in.
So, Mr. Anthony, you made the motion, would you be able, would you be willing to amend your motion to state, um, to advertise the ordinance as written with the exception of adding the four-way stop at Sharon and Norway in order to clarify the language that is in the codified ordinance?
So, move.
Mr. Booker?
Yeah, yeah, I'm second.
Okay. Any further?
Is there anything else, Chief, that you think that we can do to, we have near a hundred residents who put together a, their concern. Is there anything else that we can be doing to help? Or, I, as I put it this way, this stuff here puts us on the spot, is there something that you can think about? Can you think about that and come back to us maybe with any suggestions?
Yes, I mean, I do, I do have something that, that came to me that I think we can talk about, but was probably too simple in this, but I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight because I don't have all the figures ready for it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is it, is it possible to entertain the idea of a boulevard entrance or a planter in the middle of the street or something like that?
I think we're gonna have, we gotta look at widths and stuff like that.
Or the little, I know, I know, I love those type of things.
Oh, so, but that, that, anything we can put in there that's kind of restricted, we gotta be careful of them or a little too much.
Right, right, yeah.
It has been going down.
That was in the booklet.
Yeah, and it has been going down, uh, this year it was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars we got, um, that's a little lower than what we're normally getting, so, um, anytime you put any kind of the competiments in there, we have to be careful of it. I mean, I can get with Greg and we can figure out where to go, what we can, might be able to do, along with Chief's suggestion as to any kind of traffic calming we can do there.
I think, I think it would be nice to have some type of warning or indicator signage put up in that area that can show that we're being responsive to the concerns of the citizens with, I think are completely reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
And I would think the minimum was two signs, but I don't know where the placement was, that's, I didn't want to tie my permission to that, but perhaps, it sounded like that would require council action to do that.
Correct.
That was something that the borough could be wanting to do, and I would be very happy to hear amongst the personnel if that's either been done or wrong.
We'll look at it, because you're only talking a little over a hundred and fifty feet of roadway right now that belong to the borough, the rest of it is in the, the development.
I understand.
So there, we can't do anything in there and make it invisible, so we'd have to look and see what we can do, um, in that hundred and fifty feet.
Well, that and perhaps to develop or wouldn't mind a sign like that being placed, so that, that is an option.
Correct.
So I think that's a reasonable question to ask. Especially if it moves calming citizens here. Thank you.
Okay, there's, for the amended motion, an amended second on the table, um, all in favor of that motion. The, the all heard, motion passed. Moving on. Discussion and action on updating COVID-19 policy regarding masks. Uh, the procedural point here, I think we're gonna take some discussions before we entertain a motion in order to clarify what it's going to be, so, um, I, everybody received, um, email communication with EMC Royal and his recommendation, so this time I'll open it up, EMC Royal, to just give a overview of his recommendation and if you can ask questions.
Sure, uh, this is a timely discussion with the CDC updating their masking guidelines on Friday. Uh, for those who are not aware, that guidance changed to a low, medium, and high threshold, and I hate to bring everybody back to early twenty twenty, but it's very similar to what the Commonwealth had in place with the green, yellow, and red at that time. Their threshold, the green, is primarily if you feel like you like to wear a mask, wear a mask, but you're in an area of road transmission, uh, yet, which is most surrounding counties in, in south central Pennsylvania, except for Cumberland County. Uh, Cumberland County is in medium transmission, so people who are at risk are recommended to wear masks, as well as people who are coming into contact with those who are at risk. And then, uh, high transmission would be people, uh, everybody's to wear a mask, that's the CDC recommendation. I think that it's prudent to revisit the masking policy at this time to determine, uh, whether council feels it is best to move into, uh, more following the CDC recommendations. The one thing I would add with that is, if council decides to go away from masking, I think it's prudent to ensure that there's other mitigation measures that are in place, such as, uh, distancing chairs and council chambers, uh, and also, uh, communicating with people who are entering the building that if they do have respiratory symptoms, uh, that they should stay home slash not go, not come into the building. Uh, that one would just be for council, uh, for council's health and safety, but also for employees of the borough who are working here during the day, and also for visitors and attendees of meetings as well.
Thank you, EMC Royal. Any questions from council members?
So my question would be for our examples, like, a meeting like tonight, what would you recommend?
Well, if you go away from masking, people aren't going to show up with a mask, and so it's very hard to say, well, we're only allowing twenty people into the room unless everybody runs back home and gets a mask. Uh, and I don't think it's prudent to have thirty masks on hand, uh, saying to people, we have too many people here, everybody's got the mask on. So, uh, there's probably the ability to distance the chairs in here and get twenty-five people in here, but I'm not sure you would be able to fit everybody who's in here this evening. Uh, also, whenever we have a full council and full representatives up here, I'm not sure that we are six feet apart either. Uh, so I think that there are certainly challenges there, uh, obviously going with a more strict masking policy than what CDC recommends is one way around that. Uh, I know that there's efforts in place to enhance our virtual abilities to attend the meetings, but I don't think we're at a point where we can do that now. So I think that in some ways, uh, you would be, if you did lose in the masking policy and weren't able to conform to some of those other mitigation measures, you would really be requiring people to, uh, kind of self-attest that they are healthy when they show up to meetings.
And then my next question would be about immunocompromised residents, staff members, borough council folk. Without violating their health status and their HIPAA, how would we ensure that they're safe? It's like, it, this doesn't happen often, but, you know, if we have a meeting like this, that would be my worry about protecting both folks and citizens that want to attend until we have the virtual option.
Well, I think those people will certainly be more inclined to mask themselves, and, uh, we know that masks are somewhat effective when individuals are wearing them and are more effective when more people are wearing them. So I think that there will be some level of protection there, but obviously not the same level if they're the only masked person in the room, there's still going to be a chance of transmission.
So I, my feelings on it is, um, people need to take personal responsibility for their own health, right? So if you're an immunocompromised individual and you're out in public, you should probably be, be wearing a mask. However, this mask isn't going to help the, if I'm immunocompromised, I actually should be wearing an N95 mask, because that's a respirator mask. N95 masks are going to filter out what you are breathing in. Surgical masks only filter out what I'm breathing out, so my spill isn't getting on you. But if I don't have a mask on and you are immunocompromised and you're wearing your N95, then you are protected. I took care of plenty of TV positive patients in an ICU setting when I was a floor nurse, and I wore my respirator mask, I did not get TV, and the TV patient was not masked. I mean, usually they were on ventilators, so, so their, their respirations were, um, filtered anyway. But even on the floor, when they weren't ventilated, if they were in their rooms with their TV, they did not have, need to have their masks on as long as the person coming in without TV had their respirator mask on. So I think that, so I think that's what we have to look at. If you are immunocompromised person, you need to take the steps yourself to keep yourself safe. You need to get your vaccination, your flu shot, your COVID shot, your MMR shot, your tetanus shot, all of them. And if this, if COVID nineteen is, you know, heading toward the endemic phase, we have to wear a little bit and not walk around in masks twenty-four hours a day for the rest of our life.
And I would agree with that, unless there's an outbreak of another variant. And that's where I think that if we change our mask policy without having a caveat, if we go to a different color letter, that, then we shoot ourselves in the foot, because then we have to come back in and change the policy, so.
Well, I don't see that as possible.
Well, it's a very big figure, shouldn't we be discussing it on a properly, um...
Well, we're discussing it so we know what the motion will be, um, so, it, it was a point of, we, we think we can go in and we can, we can have a motion, I think it's appropriate now, we can take a motion, but I would stress, you know, we can, we can specify this policy that if we go into a certain phase, then it has to change.
You could certainly make the policy so that it follows the CDC recommendation, where if we move into red status, then it, everybody should be aware that they need to wear a mask, um, and, and that, the Department of Health is going to be putting out a, they're releasing a release memo and it is going to show that they're linking to the CDC data all over their website, so that people can easily find out. And if you haven't been to CDC, you go to it, you just go to the pages, the page about masking, it asks you what state you live in, what county you live in, and it tells you what your county status is, so there's really no, no way to not know what your status is in your county without, I mean, it takes thirty seconds.
Yeah, and we, yeah, and we can be responsible and, you know, look at that candidacy for each meeting and provide masking if, if it changes, if that's, you know, what we decide to do. I think that's, that's my. I mean, I just think that we need to, I think that we need to align ourselves with the CDC and just, and, 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 I just feel that's the right thing to do.
One more thought. Before a motion is made, a very quick question for Solicitor Kathy. In general terms, not specific ones, does council create a liability for the borough if it has persons under its direction mandated to be at a public meeting such as this, um, who may have immunocompromised conditions or are at risk for severe outcomes?
I'd say potentially, yes. I can't outright say, no, there's no risk of liability, because you sound like a liar every once in a while.
I, I will not expand on that at all, I, if, uh, since we don't have virtual option or virtual participation, and someone is virtually required to be here, are we, are we opening up liability for ourselves if we are not mandated masking generally in the space for that period of time?
Say, potentially, yes, I, I really can't expand on it other than to say that, um, there are a lot of factors that would go into play in terms of exposure to liability. Um, it would, there would be a question of, um, of whether or not the, the borough's policies align with your CDC recommendations or the recommendations that are, um, coming from the state. Um, there are a lot of factors that come into play with respect to a, a liability analysis. I, I will say that I'm not, um, I'm not aware of any, any cases out there where the parties have successfully sued an employer in this case or another entity for, for exposure to COVID, um, as a result of that entity's, um, masking policy. It's not to say that it can't happen, and it's not to say that we're, that those lawsuits are coming, um, but I'm just not aware of that being, being initially happened yet.
Are we subject to OSHA?
Yes.
Mr. Royal, have a comment?
It's also important to remember, and this goes back to the, the days of May, June, July, twenty twenty, unless coming to Borough Council is the only thing that an individual does that's outside of the home, there's no way to know how they're exposed to COVID-19. So unless an individual only attended Borough Council and had no other potential way that they'd be exposed, that lawsuit would be invalid.
Well, that's an excellent point, you're, you're absolutely correct. If the lawsuit were necessarily valid, that would be a, a major hurdle for a plaintiff to overcome and to prove a case that, that employer, that employer's policy was the, is the source of, of the, 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 the.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, I think we probably have to, uh, order the, the amended motion, so.
I agree with you. I motion that we amend our policy so that the mechanics, the, 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 the mask policy aligns with the highest standard via OSHA, the Department of Health Department, for the CDC. Did you follow that?
Yeah. Um, does that change, does that change with, with what the CDC is?
It would, it would require that the borough's mask policy be at the same level as the highest of the degree, so if they disagreed with one another, we will, we lending to the more conservative.
Okay.
Direction versus the less conservative.
Understood, it's your second.
Second, yes.
There's Agarthi's second. Any further discussion?
How do we know what OSHA says about masks? Like, I know the CDC, uh, if I give you... Like, I know the CDC, uh, that gives you fine, but I don't know what OSHA says about masks.
OSHA sends out regulatory things about masking quite often. So we could go to the website and they would have it made in my press, because I have gotten lots of messages from OSHA throughout the last year.
I'm on it right now, I'm trying to figure out what their, you know, guidance is.
And that's my, my thought would be, wouldn't we rely on E N C World's advice on that as things change? I mean, he's our expert here.
I agree with that, and I think since the borough is subject to OSHA oversight, it would, it would not be a good idea to leave that out.
I guess I'm, I don't understand that, that what the OSHA requirements are, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
So OSHA will do a lot of things about clean-up exposures, those types of things, social distancing. Um, so if there's an exposure in the workplace, there's a lot of regula- regulatory stuff that OSHA will decide. Contact tracing, just a little bit further.
Was OSHA considered in the original mask policy?
I, I don't believe so because the CDC have changed so many times that we just went with probably what the Department of Health was saying rather than the CDC.
But in a richer scenario, a complaint from an employee could trigger an OSHA investigation and fines that the employee does not have to bankroll itself. OSHA will assess, uh, independent of a complaintant's ability to pay for that litigation.
But, but did that apply to any workplace identity issue, right? I mean, so, okay.
It does, which is why, if, if, if OSHA, if OSHA at one time considered coming out with a mask mandate for the workplace, actually, they, they considered coming out with a, a vaccination mandate for the workplace. They only ever bubbled through one. Um, but that was discussed and employers who did not follow that guidance were subject to administrative action and fines, which can be quite substantial.
That is correct, they would choose a lawsuit for, for the mask, but that's who the original said.
And it, it would pretty much have lost that with CDC.
Their website hasn't been updated since August thirteenth, showing the soon means they're relying on CDC guidance at this point.
So I don't think OSHA should even be in the equation, I really don't. And they don't look at that much, like.
And another example, it says about CDC's masking guidance on transportation hubs, well, that was lifted yesterday because I got a notice, my son no longer needs to wear a mask on his school bus. Um, so I would say that, well, OSHA is the worker expert, they are going to rely on the health experts. And I think that, I don't want to say that the Department of Health may never deviate from the CDC, but I think that relying on CDC and Department of Health will probably give you the most accurate and up-to-date information. Uh, and of course, I think the policy can always be amended if OSHA would decide to go with something different, but, um, I don't believe that they've had a different masking policy from the CDC from the beginning. I think that would be a major issue for the federal government to have that level of discrepancy between, uh, two federal agencies.
So if I understand that all of that correctly, uh, we don't need to have the OSHA piece in the motion because we already fall under OSHA, but we can have it, have it out of the motion but still be covered under the CDC and the Health Department.
As long as OSHA would not come out with something that is more strict than the CDC, which.
And we fall under OSHA, so we should instruct staff to track OSHA's, uh, updates for us anyway.
And that's kind of my point, why not have it in the motion if it's, if it's going to be required anyway?
Because they're, because they're behind what the Health Department and the CDC are already saying, so.
Based on our standards.
I think, I think for members of, for employees, for example, if they want to know what their status is, whether they need to wear a mask, we need to give them a concrete place to go to find that information. Um, let's say it's a member of the police department who's working on Saturday and the, and the guidance changes on Friday. I may not think to send an email to Roger saying, hey, the guidance changed, or Chief Myers may not think to send an email to her staff. So if the CDC is, and, and the Department of Health linking to the CDC is providing the most up-to-date information on this, I think it's best to provide that source because it's something that are all, whether members of the public, whether our staff, council members, uh, can easily find that information. Like I said, it took me five minutes on the OSHA site just to try to find something related to masks. So I wouldn't want to point somebody who maybe isn't as well-versed in reading, uh, health and employment documents to try to have to do that on their own. That would be my recommendation.
I think having OSHA language in there just muddies the waters. Like, it just, you know, third place I have to try to go find information that isn't really even there or accessible.
So I'm happy to amend that motion to remove OSHA, just so long as the Borough Manager gives assurances that OSHA requirements for employees are observed and if something were changed there, uh, that would be brought to council's attention right away or taken administrative action.
OSHA's, OSHA's taken care of on a daily basis. Highway Department talks about that on a toolbox, on toolbox discussions once a week, um, things are taken care of. My motion's ten certified as a matter of fact. So, I mean, OSHA is, we're well aware of what the OSHA requirements are for the Borough Mechanics Board. Um, we have followed as directed from the original, um, ordinance or policy that was done, was we followed M A T and the CDC recommendations from them from the get-go. Um, OSHA issues stuff, but theirs is not necessarily directed to us and the Borough Office giving us guidance. They will come in and do cleanup as, as, uh, Councilperson Agarthi spoke to, but, uh, we've always followed CDC.
Right, well, understanding source that that being that indicated that we do fall under OSHA guidance. Correct, so if there was an, OSHA standard that came out that superseded, um, superseded CDC recommendations guidelines, OSHA would prevail.
So that would, so that would be for employees of the borough though, not necessarily citizens attending our meetings. Like, they don't have to follow OSHA, like.
That, that is correct.
So I don't think that that needs to be in.
Right, it's like I was saying, I'm happy to amend that motion to exclude the OSHA, but leave the rest.
And I'll amend my second.
Given amended motion, amended second, any further discussion? Say, non, author?
Bye.
Author?
Name.
Motion passed.
We'll go to, can I ask?
Hi.
Yep. Maybe can you forward me some information so I can read you the signs?
Yeah.
The policy, alright, thank you. Sorry, sir.
Sure. Moving on, Friday Administration Board, that's Anthony.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, P S A D is here to, uh, help us, uh, get a better understanding of what we're all about. But I don't think you have a lot, you don't have a lot of support. Oh, sorry, didn't see that, I heard my name. No, no, we're forty-four, I'm sorry. If you, uh, would like to begin with, uh, the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Joe, let, uh, he's not, he's, he's called in, so.
Are you calling in?
Yeah, he called in, he's not, uh, doesn't really.
Yes.
Yeah, he called in.
Okay.
He didn't zoom in, and he's.
Oh, you did.
So.
So you want me to start out, you know, the work with him?
Yeah. So, sorry to put you.
So, no, it's fine.
If you have a chair in the back, if you have like chairs, you can come pick the chair and drag it back there.
Kind of like, like, oh, you did. I'm kind of glad you did too.
Yep.
It's a surprise, but it's okay. It looks very nice, it's in a brand. So first of all, to let you, you don't really recognize my face. I'm just got to work for the Borough Association, I'm from the Borough Association. And, um, most especially representing the National Retirement Trust, which has been proud to be your representative for, for raising the pension for the last, I think it was thirty years. We're sure, we're sure through the time that the welfare's been back, and we're glad to have you back, and it's been, uh, about twelve or thirteen years now. So, um, anyway, uh, for those of you who don't know that, that's the case, um, and for those of you who don't really wish about the American Youth and the Retirement Trust, I'll tell you just a, a quick synopsis and just to I started nineteen seventy-two by the Association, we're in fifth year, first year, um, I'm Clas and I'm Toby. And so, uh, we're, we're moving along with this, but, uh, it's been a pleasure for me for the last twenty years to, uh, to be a representative of T S A B's, uh, National Retirement Trust. And I've even done a really spectacular job with the, we, we moved this pension plan forward. I had about seventy million dollars in it when I started, we're now pushing four hundred million. Um, we have, uh, a hundred sixteen seven, a hundred sixteen million properties, uh, two hundred thirty nine, uh, pension plans across the whole state, and I get covered all of it. So I deliver this fix on a regular basis, and it takes me about thirteen months to get it all in, but, anyway, um, I have a rest because COVID's coming up, so you're my first stop on, on this stuff, so again, so I'm really, uh, very happy to be over this. And anyway, for those of you who haven't found you, it's definitely really good to have us with the Time Foundation Association, just one of a kind of folks that provide services for you guys. Um, and, uh, so the three, three legs of the stool are the investment portion, the restoration portion, um, and the actual up portion. And that we talked about both are mystery and actually aside because we, we're a separate entity, it's, it's side of that. Um, actually, it's not a huge portion, they're pretty much, uh, accounts, you know, they don't ship the messenger kind of thing, but they need a number source, uh, for you, uh, every, uh, every two years, and I'm sure you've recently. Did you get your, did you get your report yet, or is it?
Do you have extra copies for the employees?
What's that?
Extra copies of your.
I do not, I, I can see that she gets them, okay?
Yeah, she could.
Yes, um, and I'll, I'll, there's something else I'll leave you on, uh.
In terms of, we didn't even get copies of everything tonight, this presentation is for council.
Okay. Works for me. Um, well, I, the report that I gave is available every quarter, this is a quarterly investment report. Um, I'll be glad to give you, I can't stand here, I probably can tell you this password, but I'll be glad to pass it on through Roger. But the password is, you can go on around every quarter, on our website, and look at this report and some other, because if you're looking for some library, there's things like this investment policies about that deck, um, lots of fun to read through. Um, but it'll give you a lot of detailed information on how we set the policies for your investments. We are, we're a fairly conservative, uh, investment outfit, um, so the, the two crime monsters we're trying to capture is we don't have as much as we can, and we can't save sunshine, but we might preserve capital, and we don't want to take too much risk. Uh, and we do a very, very good job at that, we have one of the best, actually one of the best options in the country, investment-wise, Morgan Stanley, out of Wyoming. The, uh, the Morgan Stanley team out of Wyoming is an institutional manager. Uh, there's only two Morgan Stanley, uh, institutional managers in Pennsylvania, one in the West and one in the East. And the one in the East, Wyoming, happens to be led by Ben's magazine, one in Pennsylvania, and thirteen in the country. We're very glad to have the people we have renting our money and watching our, and the, and the, and the ground trust and wealth trust of information that they have that's available to us is, is, you know, hardly, it's very, very replaceable. Uh, they're, they're a really, really fine outfit. Um, I had a really good time, I could have, and I know, it's about four, three, four years ago, we came by, and there was another presentation, and he was actually with us, because I can understand this stuff. Um, in future, we'll, we'll do that, so. Um, I'm just going to briefly highlight this, this include, it's not a review, it's about its first generation, I'm the one that designed it, so it's an Olympic champion. Uh, I'll fix it. But what I tried to do is keep the two little data as much information as possible, and I think that I think it's good for people to know. Uh, again, so that's just my idea, but I tried to put myself in your shoes, and so if I was seeing the nuts out of this, we're what I'm in. So first of all, we don't even know how to break them here. So if you're looking, uh, basically, you're looking at the twenty quarter, you'll see that it does do two things. First, uh, we have, uh, we have the R bonds, uh, mutual fund, which is the whole mutual fund worth that are essentially sixty-four type, they're, they're blended, uh, balanced account, which is very similar with the, with the trust. Um, and, uh, how do we mix up against that, basically? So how are we comparing to that? That's what we use as kind of a benchmark. Because we're such a greedy animal, um, and we're not using mutual funds, uh, we have to try and benchmark or accept it with something, so this is what we look at. Um, so anyway, all the twenty quarter tests in from December thirty-first, uh, whether it's one year, three years, five years, seven years, and ten years. One thing I want to bring to your attention most personally is, if you look at it, it's a section, section twenty, uh, uh, two thousand, potentially this tracking, the tool that we've been using has been, it's been since tw- uh, since, uh, since two thousand, um, we've had over twenty years we've been tracking this. It's very, and, and so the average, the moving average for you over the last ten years is seven point two nine percent, which is, in terms of, in terms of municipal pensions, it's pretty much normal concern, uh, the, 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 uh, checks and balances that we have in the plan and, and the insurgency of which we invest. So, uh, just a couple of highlights are, are telling me also, all this reporting based on is a quarterly demand. So as you see this, this report coming in quarterly, you can turn this little natural filter in, um, on a quarterly basis to the left, they just need to kind of, they're down, they're kind of, uh, higher invested. You know, we have thirty percent domestic stock, working on management, total fixed income is twenty-six point seven percent. And then the rest into, and the rest of the, they're not even weeks, who are in, who are in primary state, uh, institutional world state that, that we invest in, so. Um, that's shopping malls, high rises, and, and large major, uh, which form this. Um, need to tell us some traction, the reason first we have a lot of, you know, a lot of, uh, retirement data take. Not just from cash flow, but for, uh, for those other, uh, two hundred thirty-seven plans we have, so. Anyway, um, but I still want to do about this, because that, the next page, page four, I didn't tell you that the second, we do that, we have, we have, not many, but we have a few who are extremely conservative in the trust, and we don't want to hear anything that has the word stock attached to it. So we can have all the balance on the record, it's just for those folks. Um, it's about, uh, eighteen twenty teens, and so that's, uh, you can see the stuff. And the bond tax areas are not doing well, we're falling into, we don't, I don't tell you, we didn't worry enough, so, um. Anyway, I do want to highlight that how the plan is structured, and I kind of skipped over that on page three, I tried to fix it. We are a combination of, our investments are a combination of several means to count and with ETS. We don't have mutual funds per se, the reason is because we're so large, we can throw the fake off, thirty, ten, twelve million dollars, and we have a loan manager or a company that manages, you know, a style-specific, we have a, a large chat, uh, very, very large chat, wealth manager, something, hold on one. Problem? So, um, that's what that list on the left-hand side, uh, depicts all the different companies that we, uh, we look. At any time, if you want more information on those, they can manage it, where they're located, what they've done, you know, so forth. Please get in touch with me, okay? If you know, give me a lead, I have no problem with anything with you. But when it's kind of thrown, I didn't think that was proper, so I was trying to be as, uh, you know, as much information as possible without, or one year where we're going to sit back behind the tears. Um, but I want to stress is that this is a solid pension plan, it's been a solid pension plan for over fifty years, and this time we're really good to offer. Um, and we would appreciate you being part of the pension plan, and we're formed by the Association, so we don't just really have a purpose other than serving. Um, and I'm a paying force of the PSAB, so in essence, I work for you. How's that sound? I didn't want to go further than that. Um, are there any questions about this, my first question, because my telephone card is out of the phone, there's no time to answer this, so. If you need a reservation, I'm not sure, sorry, you need a lot of, uh, pension one-on-one type stuff, I'm not sure. Um, the last thing I want to do, uh, after, let's take questions for, do you have a question, sir?
You know, I think, Joe, maybe, uh, where we stand right now as far as the smoothing that we were going through, the reason why the Harris thing, where we're at right now, and I think you and I talked today on the phone about the, uh, the fact that we're, we've completed smoothing last year. That was one of Linda's, she wanted to get that, that extra money that we paid towards pension fund, she wanted to get that finished last year. And that's what she accomplished and invited, so.
Well, yes, so I assume that you.
Said we went away from PSAB for a little while, just elaborate on.
So you're, you're at a zero, uh, uh, distress level.
Correct.
Can't be in any better shape than a pension plan than two things. On, on, um, I forget what that term is, on the, uh, not smoothing, but.
The N M L, I mean, this, uh.
No, it's, you're on a cash basis, cash basis, but. Pardon me, I see no noise. Cash basis, um, and to be a zero distress level. What that means is, what you see on paper is real money. In other words, the, the smoothing was a way for you, really easy to kind of kick the key down the road, but it's, it's way to, to smooth, to push down and, uh, some of your, some of your debt, okay? That's done, that's over. Um, what you see is what you get. That's done. That's over. Um, what you see is what you get, what you have is what you have. Um, and to be a pure stress level means that you are a nine percent of heart on your, on your, on your financing. So you are in great shape. That has not always been the case, um, coming out in two thousand eight, some various situations with the, challenges both faced, um, between PSAB leadership and, and those guys who've been, who, in the best of poor, participate, uh, helping us out here for some good returns for the last five, well, actually ten years. Um, this is what we're able to, we've been, we've been on the cable at Sunshine. So, so congratulations to you. It's a great place to be, uh, in terms of your, the fiscal stability of pension claims. Um, they're not in a, it's not, it's been any, any, uh, distress. And I know that the time stamps also keeps you up to date on things that are extremely important, like, um, the tariff details, and where you are as far as what your assumptions are, there's, there's, there's any moving parts behind the scenes to help this thing work, okay? But we're going to tell the good news, which one is, some of it's new, except the last one out this year.
So I just want to say, thank you. So part of the reason that you're here is because we wanted to be educated on where we are, and a lot of us have not had exposure yet to what's happening with our pension funds. So that was the sole purpose of having you guys come in, was to lay this out for us, to make sure that there are no questions to whatever extent we have the capacity to generate them, and to put a name, kind of face with what's happening with the pension funds. So a seven plus rate of return over a period of time is just showing us a solid for a, a, a conservative fund, so.
Yes, we're a group, uh, which, which fixes what you're asking for, and to do it for that length of time. And remember, that's seven, that, that twenty years spans across two thousand eight, and then it ups and downs, and comes and goes, and kind of the rest, or twenty two, twenty one years.
Yes.
So, um, stress, back in the morning, I feel pretty doubtful about that mission too.
That we're caught up on the smoothing, so.
Yes, yeah. The smoothing is zero, but that's just, you know, was a personal, okay, absolutely, absolutely.
Is there anything in your opinion that we should be paying attention to?
I'm sorry?
Anything in your opinion that we should be paying attention to?
Well, actually, at this time, uh, because of the way things have gone, especially the last two years, when we put together so many different, uh, ways of, of good returns, we're above your, your needed returns. Um, and, and I know that we're, we're fairly caught up on everything, the most shared with the community doing. I, I think it is in great shape, you know? And you're part of this, it's, uh, it's a nice place to be, just, uh, uh, just reaffirm once in a while, you know? Um, speaking of that, I want to make a recommendation to you, about two things, I feel, uh, probably, uh, first of all, I need out my business card, I'm always interested in my financial. Um, if you call me, if you email me, I do tell you that. Um, if you look at, I'm, I'm showing my, my, uh, cell phone number. That's probably easy to believe because I'm not in the field, I've said it one anyway. So, um, uh, and I do spend a little time in office, but I try not to. So email and, and telephone, that's what you're holding me up, we'll return your call, and, and I mean this, for the occasion, when I don't question, when I don't ask. So if you've got a question, if you've got a concern, that's number one, number two. I already, I would think that, um, well, should we counsel folks? Um, this is, this distribution responsibility we have is very, very important. You know, if you don't realize that, well, no. For, for, the, the, um, whatever happened in the past, happened in the past, is best thing we can do for the family and the record officials. So, um, if you don't have any back some time, you kind of go over the pension one on one, get your knees lifted, and kind of give you a, a little bit more down the road on, 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 most of the pensions, and all types of pensions, which is all types of pensions, and now you have the ones you have, and, and so on and so forth. And I have to do that, and if I need, uh, budget expertise, do that, or, you know, I can dig into it. So, you know, we're just kind of on a, on a temporary lockdown because of COVID, it's still, but, uh, okay. My boss says, uh, yeah, it's okay. I'm, I'm glad to be out in the south, and we're tired of my fear loss and the house, and, uh, he's, uh.
So I have a question, I'm sorry. They just got, I, I, I certainly echo our thanks and having you here today. Just a couple of quick questions, they're easy ones, I promise.
Okay.
I'm assuming all the times that we see in the street floor are net all expenses?
They're, they're, of your investment expenses, you are correct. The other expenses you have are the survey expenses, and those are shown on your net asset statement, which is the right one you seem to, what's the amount?
Uh, those coming out of the, the client funds?
Well, they're paid by the client, that's a, that's a normal, that's a normal cost expense.
I understand, and you know.
About sixty versus points of.
That's what I was wondering, that's what I'm thinking. Thank you for that. And that's coming out on a monthly or quarterly basis?
A monthly, there's a proportion of that conduct. So I took a look at your twenty before I came over, took a look at your, where, um, uh, twenty one year, we're, we're, we're. Just a minute.
Hey, they're on the phone now. They finally, I'm here.
No, we've been here the whole time, uh, just waiting to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Caffey, that, I just follow, real quickly, see your colleague can join in. The performance, I assume, works through the area of inflows and outflows into the plan.
That is correct. What you see in terms of real value, or things that they report, which is non-needered returns, and these are, these are not the same.
Yes, that's what, thank you. And last question, I had, uh, you, you worked as a needed returner, a made returner, but you mentioned the needed rate of return.
Yeah.
Can you kind of follow that? What is that?
What that is, that's a target number that, that actually is used, like, to, this is what they like to have. Uh, and based on that, they use that as part of the equation of, well, if we have this, it's plus this, plus this equals, what can you do about it? What you put in, what, what, the term term and this and that. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that number is. But I really agree with them, you know, look at those numbers all the time. So I'll defer that question, if you want to look at what the number is, to mention that, so.
I just like how I deal with that number is, sure, we have it this evening, thank you, yes.
My problem, so, uh, you know, if you want to be service, uh, anything to do with life, to, uh, uh, to start us on a regular basis, I'm willing with us. Um, I think because of the nature of where we're constructed, because we're kind of relaxed about it, and you have all these other folks to get for us. So we're kind of a buffer between, it's a rebound thing, you know? Um, but it's good, we're really, we're sure responsibilities to, uh, to make the catalyst one to hear. Especially for, uh, boroughs size and towns this size, I think we'd be more encouraged to, uh, have so much to hear, just to give you a briefing, nothing. So time to stay the year, we can make it more brief, we're not doing anything else, but, okay? So I like that, but I like that for you guys, so. Now, now, who do you want? Do you want to share other questions? Anybody question?
I don't, I think, uh, Councilman Beer had a question, so.
Did he? Oh, yeah, suggestion for that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll let it go, there's, 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 I'm all right, sir.
Doug, can you hear us?
Thank you.
Uh, we can hear, basically, if you're close, but it was very difficult to be able to hear what Joe was saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, yeah, we got, I've got you on the speaker here, um, and you're up on, yeah, so, um.
Yeah, Peter, we can, we can hear you just fine, and it's just, the president and Tommy Anderson, too.
He's a regular therapist, that's why.
We were going to run down the pension sum, right, but that's up to you all. I know you've got a busy agenda, so we can be as quick or as long as you need.
I think, I think Joe went over that a good bit. Uh, there was a needed rate of return, assumed rate of return, right? Number that, uh, some of the council persons were looking for. What is that, that number that you're shooting for, Doug, on our pension plan?
It's, that, it's, that rate from an actual world standpoint, and we were able to lower it recently, but it's seven percent from an actual world standpoint, which is the assumed rate of return of the plan. And look, investments have been coming in because bonds have been so low, and a lower amount than that over the, especially the last couple of years. And you're looking at these really over long periods of time, so you're not in terrible shape, but it'd be nice to try to tweak that rate down a little. But it's one of the more expensive triggers to pull, you know, with the pension plans. And just to give you also broad, you know, I know we set out some pension one on one slides, we can always do that at some point in time. But just to give you a quick summary, that you didn't really get into, you have three pension plans, two defined benefits, the police, the non-U, and what's called a non-uniform defined contribution plan. The non-U defined benefit was frozen in order to save costs going forward with the non-U defined contribution plan. As in the last valuations, one, one, twenty one, that are done every two years, based on the prior couple of years, the overall municipality, which is the liabilities and assets to the three plans combined, you were at a funding ratio of ninety six percent, which puts you at a state level of zero, meaning, uh, that you're zero distress, which is really good. A hundred obviously is the best that you can be, and that's based on market value as well, though smoothing. The police plan was a hundred and three percent funded, the non-uniform plan was eighty six percent funded, and the non-uniform DC plan, because of the nature, it's defined contribution, they're always a hundred percent. Your market value, seven percent. Uh, so overall, you know, in really good shape, and one of the reasons the non-U was an expensive plan to fund, because of the benefit structure, that we all disagreed with you to move to a defined contribution plan going forward, which over time will lower your risk and your cost, because you don't have any market gyrations, uh, that affect you on a non-U, on a defined contribution plan. You have basically no actual world over that. So that was a very smart move. Doug and I administer, we're one of the largest consultants in the state. We've been doing it thirty years, the people here are former auditors, and, uh, we manage close to probably a hundred plus DC plans that have helped everybody like you try to mitigate risk and migrate over to those where possible.
Yeah, just to give you an idea, going back a long time ago, uh, the borough had switched providers to another organization, and in a really short period of time, it was terrible timing, not only did, did the investments really crash at that particular moment, but the, the other organization really had no clue on act six hundred, and we had a, a quite a significant, uh, uh, amount of audit findings to correct. The good news is going forward, uh, the last audit reports were clean for all these plans, and the next audit report will, well, the next time they'll see an auditor should be in, will be in next year, for a four-year cycle. So basically, these plans are in very, very good shape, and because of the good, strong investment results for the last couple of years, and, and also twenty nineteen, the plans have significantly improved, and because of the way the, uh, the, the assets have performed, smoothing no longer is advantageous. So that's why we had to get rid of that. From an actual world standpoint, for years, ever since the twenty oh eight investment losses, uh, the plans, generally, a lot of plans have been doing actual smoothing because of the significant rise in pension costs because of the market decline back in twenty oh eight. And as a result of these last two years, in which twenty twenty, uh, which under COVID is extraordinary, in my opinion, that the plan earns like greater than ten percent that year, and this past year, twenty twenty one, they were above thirteen percent. So because of that, uh, actual world smoothing no longer made any sense. So we, we went to market values, so, you know, good news is, these, these plans are in a lot better shape than they've been probably in, in about at least fifteen years.
Does anybody have any questions, sir?
We'll talk about having to back to do a one-on-one class four, really.
Yeah, and there's, Doug provided you with a slide activity package, um, that was from, I think, two thousand eight, Doug. Uh, but it's, it's, the calendar, everything that's on there is basically the same true for what we, what we follow today, so. Um, Doug, you know, go ahead, Doug, sorry.
It's, sorry, Jim, that's a, a presentation that, that we, I put together that Doug and I do, and, and a PSAB meeting, and it was in eighteen. But basically, the key events to think about, you know, and, and we can break that down or go into it in detail sometime, if it would help the new members. But you really just want to be familiar with the key events of the year, which is the state aid reporting in the spring, basically, the MMO creation and passing that in the fall, when you receive each state aid in September, it's got to be deposited within the plan within thirty days of proceeding into the pension, and then basically, you've got to make those MMO payments on an annual basis. Those are really kind of the key events that drive our calendar, you know, on an annual basis, and along with the financials and all of the other things that we do, you know, blocking and tackling day in and day out with your, uh, retirees and active members.
The other really good thing, the borough had very good, strong, uh, what I say, leadership from within. Glenda and Roger were always, and have always been terrific on getting us the information that we need to do our jobs. And, and believe me, in today's COVID environment, it's been incredibly difficult, in some cases, getting information from people. It's a lot more challenging than it was in the past, and they haven't missed a beat. And just, just to give them thumbs up on both, on how well they both have done for us, on making our job a lot easier. Of course, I know Glenda just recently retired, and, but she's still, I believe, you know, doing part-time to help out. And like I said, they, they, they've been invaluable, and, you know, getting, and that's always made our life easy, when we have to do, especially this time of the year. Jim and I are typically in the office, you know, fourteen, fifteen hour days, in some cases, during the middle of January, do, uh, you know, to just about this time of the year because of, you know, year-end financials. But again, the, the, the key is, the borough has always done a very, very good job of, of keeping us informed when there's anything that's going on, also involving us in any kind of contract negotiations, et cetera. Because we've seen what happens when, when municipalities just go off on their own, and we find out after the fact. It's, it's a, it's a lot easier to, to keep, you know, to, to, to stitch in time stays nine, you hate to say this. But, you know, if, if, let's say you enter into a bad deal, or for something that's not legal, if there was one municipality that put a hundred fifty dollar servicing grab, well, that's not allowable under six hundred. They're really going to get an audit finding and a problem. So, you know, basically, again, Roger's done a terrific job, so has Glenda, on, you know, making things easy for us to basically, whenever we see something, they've done it, and they've also done what really needs to be done to keep the plan in good shape.
Everybody get any questions? No? Good?
Thank you very much for being here. We're grateful for the opportunity to hear from you, we, uh, and, uh, thanks for all this information. I look forward to taking it a little bit to, and maybe reaching out to you with questions.
So that's great, and feel free to look through that pension primer, it'll, it'll give you a really nice answer to the key issues. Uh, we try to keep that fairly simple for a training session, and we're happy to, uh, help in any way that we can, and, you know, good luck with everything.
Let me just say one thing, just, I, I, and again, I, I apologize if, if Joe already brought this up. But Joe had mentioned about, you know, wanting to schedule, you know, at, at least annual meetings to go over the pension plans, and I think that's a terrific idea. I don't know if he mentioned that yet, and if he did, like I said, my apology is a duplication of bringing it up. But it's certainly a good idea. We can also, you know, having a greater, you know, timeframe, and we can get into more specific issues, should you have that, on, you know, what makes sense going forward, or if you have any questions that are, you know, there's no such thing as a bad question, especially when it comes to pensions, because certainly, uh, it, it's a very complicated field, let's say, believe.
It's a great idea.
Yes. Yeah, call it a training session, you know, call it a, call it a, finish your training.
Okay, thank you very much, Sersky. Do you have a digital copy of this?
No.
Nope, but I will see that you get that, it is on our web, we post it on the website. Okay.
And that's where you can get the digital copy, which is, I just printed these out, because I wanted you to have them handy for tonight, but, um, it, it, like I said, it, about, about twelve to fourteen days after the end of each quarter, we post it on the, on the website.
Okay, and then you'll see that anybody here tonight wants a copy, gets a copy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, I'll send that, I'll send that, uh, password to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Well, Jim, thank you, guys, very much, appreciate you being here, so to speak, tonight. Thank you.
Good luck with the meeting, we'll sign, thank you, take care.
So this is, uh, just an audit, we're, we're, I believe, we're still waiting on it, is that correct?
Correct. Uh, we had a glitch, they send us notices that we have to sign off on the audit, and then it gets sent back. Um, our firewall was stopping it from coming back, so we finally got it through. Uh, I signed that yesterday. We should see those audits, hopefully, at least the draft audits, hopefully by the end of the month, so.
Handle the buzzer usually pretty quick, turn them around, very good.
Thank you. Discussion and organization on tattoos and the ordinance change. I think he's here too, for the special. No, I'm turning this off.
I think it would be appropriate to ask, uh, what's the, Cassie, what the, what the proper, channel we're doing, what the proper step is, the next direction.
As we discussed previously, uh, the request for resigning is coming to council as a purely discretionary, discretionary function for council. So council can either elect to not entertain this request, or if you do, elect to entertain the request. Um, there's nothing, there's no procedure that's, that's set in place under the municipality's planning code, in terms of how you go about doing this, other than a, a proposal, and ordinance, um, must go before, um, the planning commission for their review and recommendation, and then come back to council. So the way I would suggest handling, handling this, is if you'd like to go forward with this. So the way I would suggest handling this is if you'd like to go forward with this, we can prepare a draft zoning ordinance amendment. You can, if you wish, you can refer that to a committee of council to review and comment on, to bring it back to council, or you can just send it to the planning commission for their review and comment. So you can use discretion in terms of how that process might look.
Do we have more control over the end result of moving forward with an ordinance change? Definitely would if the applicant decided to go to the zoning hearing board to seek a variance.
Yes. You do. So if the applicant were to go to the zoning hearing board to seek a variance and if the zoning hearing board were to agree that the applicant has demonstrated a hardship and that variance should be created, that would then open the door, frankly, for any other like situated business owner to obtain a variance from the zoning hearing board moving forward versus being able to craft a solution in the context of your existing zoning ordinance to address whatever concerns you might have with respect to zoning and this particular request.
There's a concern as to how many potential businesses of this particular use could be in one zoning district. Is it possible to limit that with distance requirements?
Yes. So it's not uncommon for a municipality to have built into its zoning ordinance what we call proximity requirements or proximity regulations with respect to how close a particular business, for example, might be located one from another or located from a church or a school or a residential zoning district, things like that. So you can have proximity regulations built into your zoning ordinance.
So it's pleasure, council.
I think we should work on it as a zoning ordinance. I'm not quite sure why it was made in the first place. I do agree. I like being able to have a distance or an amount of a certain type of business downtown because we didn't know that we'd see an abundance of one pop up. I'm sure they appreciate that, too.
I'd also like to hear the input of the planning commission as well. I think that the really guiding one would be the proximity.
Yes. Agreed.
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 Okay. Sounds like then we should, committee recommends to send a solicitor for a draft text amendment to then council get a look at that and then we would send that to the planning commission.
I can surely do that. And it sounds like there's a consensus that you would like to have a proximity restrictions built into it in terms of the number of businesses within the zoning district? Or any other types of restrictions in terms of proximity to schools or churches or?
I would think in a predominantly residential area, that would be something that would be advantageous to me.
A residential zoning district.
Like what not permissible?
So I guess the restriction we're talking about is in the commercial main and market district?
Well, right now you have, right now it's a conditional use in two zoning districts, commercial main and market and the commercial general. The commercial general is over around Siles, down Simpson Street, from, down past Gale Street. CMM is the downtown itself. It runs from Arch Street to Frederick or in that general area. And it's only Main Street. So that's the CMM.
And this particular shop is located in which district?
I think he hasn't really picked where he'd like to go. He is here.
Do I need to come up there?
Please.
No, you guys have four regulations on it. One is some deposit business license in the shop, which is fine. You need to post your business hours on the window, fine. You guys already have fifteen hundred square, I think fifteen hundred feet, that can't be another tattoo shop. The one that confuses me is why it has to be on the second floor. That is confusingly, like, I bought a house in Kansas City. I grew up in New Jersey. I would love to put the business back into the community and show that tattooing is not what you think of like the eighties, seventies, nineties, whatever, that it's more modern. And like I said, I bought a house, my kids are going to go to Kansas City, everything, and I would love to put it back into the community and be part of the community as like Jubilee Day. The rent shop, like where you guys do the mini house there and doing, I'd want to be a part of that. The trick-or-treating with the kids, I want to do all of that. And I have a nine-year-old, a two-year-old and a six-month-old. The nine-year-old is so happy about running the hand candy out and she is very welcome. I don't know where she gets it from. But that's one thing is like the second floor issue. Because I did talk to the people that have, it's 33 West Main. It's, you live in a G man, it's like literally, it was a candy shop, I believe it was? Yes. And I talked to them and they're cool with it. They just shut out to talk to you guys. And that's where I am.
So I think we're looking to change.
So do we really just have to delete that part where it says it has to be on the second floor? Is it just that easy?
I'm still going to be a conditional use, which means there'll be a condition, it's not just a straightforward zoning permit. He would have to apply for the zoning, the conditional use. It would come to council for a hearing. Council could put other restrictions on it. This could be, and Solicitor Cassie, correct me if I'm wrong, this could be a simple matter of removing any such establishment in the CMM district shall be located on the upper floor of a building only. Removing that condition would allow us to proceed under conditional use. Now, being a conditional use under the MVC, you are, within reason, you are allowed to put more restrictions on, more conditions on the use. But that's entirely up to council how you want to do it.
You're saying on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
That's correct. And we would be living with the current restrictions that this type of business comes under. So do we want to simply accept those previous conditions or do we want to look at that more carefully? I'm wondering, should this go to a committee really to help Solicitor Cassie draft the proposed ordinance? And I don't know, fifteen hundred feet, that makes sense. It doesn't make sense and Solicitor Cassie will have a number of other issues that?
I think we, I think we throw that to the planning commission. You know, that'd be my.
I could see that.
I know, like Carlisle, they have a grandfather law that only allows two shops within perimeter, like the borough or there. And you have hammer and nail and you have visual addiction. Since visual addiction is being sold, that opens up a spot. That could be something you guys could do here, since we came from just that main drag main street smaller than, you know, you can just keep one shop or, I mean, it's really you guys.
I think the planning commission makes sense. I think we need more salon for sure. Sorry, Doug.
All the hair stuff.
We might, someone kind of think about that a little bit before we act again and do something that we didn't.
So the process is the solicitor is looking for a liberty guidance from us so he can put something together so that we can look at it so it can go around the planning so they can send it across to the board by the standard.
That's right.
How fast does all that happen?
So I can have something ready for the next council meeting, a draft. And it sounds, everyone's in agreement to eliminate the second floor limitation. My suggestion would be, let's put together a draft ordinance that does just that and send it to the planning commission with a request that they review it with also taking a look at if there are any other recommendations they would have in terms of the conditions placed upon to the conditional use.
That's a great idea.
Great idea.
I can have that go back to council at the next meeting on the fifteenth.
Thank you very much.
And then we're all going to get matching tattoos.
Uh, this is on me. Should I come back on the fifteenth then, Clay Bill?
There's also, we come to any and all meetings if you'd like to come back and hear what is being, what's being proposed.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If I may, this is a public service standpoint, the real important meeting for you would be to attend the planning commission meeting. The meeting on the fifteenth for council, I look at as being more of a procedural step for the council to say yes, but send this to the planning commission.
So the planning commission meeting would be in April. Right at the end of?
We might be able to make the March, we can make the March meeting?
Yes. Okay.
Yes, it'd be the twenty eighth.
Yep.
Sorry. That's our first planning commission meeting this year.
Yes, sir.
So you think we can make March?
Yeah, we'll make March. Yeah, if council decides, if council moves to send it to them, then we can get it turned around because it's the only thing that's on the agenda this whole time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
So a quick point, Roger Deskons is at twenty-two hundred feet. So I put a fifty-hundred foot spacing in there.
I get one shot.
I just measured and I'm giving my. So he would be the only one, he would be the only shop permitted in that zoning district, the way it's written right now.
Thank you very much. We've all been discussing on ARP funding plan, checking for updated reveals.
Well, John Kosky and Axelrod is setting up workshops for us to do our reporting. They're going to sit down with Danielle and I and we're going to do the reporting and make sure that everything's in there. We've, we've been getting stammed by what is called SAM, the government acquisition thing. They're telling us our SAM account has expired. It's not expired. This is something that's going around everybody that got ARP funds. So we're good. We're stocked up. We'll, as soon as reporting, we'll be accepting report at the end of the month. On that deadline, yep.
Next item is to continue discussion on borrowing for infrastructure. So the, our financial planners came, I wasn't able to be here for that meeting a month ago, and I want to follow up on that with the city committee level to talk about borrowing to pay for the infrastructure updates that we are planning to make roads, servers, whatnot. Can I get a little feedback from you all as to how you felt that presentation went?
I think it was a really good presentation and what I agree with him is that we have to have a plan to present to them to borrow money. And that's where I'm hoping that we can have a plan. The amount of money that we need is a lot and I think we need to start doing it now versus waiting because every year it's more and more expensive. And we have roads that are in disrepair that need to be repaired. And what is it, fifteen years is the average length of a road? So we're already behind and we're going to be, you know, on dirt roads soon. So I think we have to be aggressive, but we have to have that plan for the borrowing. I'm excited.
Those are easier to repair.
We have a question there too. So, committee level, how much of this is going to be impacted by the stormwater and sewer? Because this is on me, but as I've learned, that has to be collaboration.
Maybe I could pass the footnote over the engineer, throw a little discussion over?
Yeah, I think the obvious common touch approach is to, you know, re-raid the infrastructure before you do the streets. The practical application of that is you need to be prepared to borrow sixty million dollars. And those are like orders of magnitude that we're talking, big, big, big numbers. So in terms of a targeted approach, it's kind of a more realistic adventure, you know, for example, in my mind, I was to pick up Allen Street. You know what I mean? That's something there that we need to do something with because we're not going to be able to wait long enough to gather enough money together to like fix everything there, like to the point that we want to before the roads don't fall apart. So it's kind of like a, we have a picture area to just fix. We're going to have to do some areas like Keller Street where we, you know, the sewer is okay shaped, the storm sewer we can do now. The road is about to fall apart, but there's going to be kind of a phased, you know, phased approach in terms of that, so.
So in terms of a plan that is required for us to be able to borrow money, you could put together a list for us to attack with, for example, three million dollars over a three-year period that we would be able to jump right on.
Correct. Three million seems kind of low.
Three million is pretty low. I agree. We have about a ten million dollar limit kind of going on.
Borrowing. To borrow. If, give me, maybe you could help enlighten us a little bit. So if we're looking at a sixty million dollar total budget.
I mean, in our.
Okay.
Probably higher than that.
Right, yeah, that's probably value. So, you know, you're talking about three million, are we looking at stormwater contributing additional for that? Sewer could be an addition of the that? And are we looking at equal investment amounts or how are we, in a general rule of thumb, do you have any idea how we're typically thinking of? I don't know what we're tying in.
So stormwater separate, separate fund, sanitary separate fund. I believe Councilman Anthony is basically talking about this, this three million dollars over three years would literally just be the paving and roofing portion of that, of that amount. Stormwater separate, sewer separate fund, like that, that'll all have to be coordinated differently. It comes out of different cops. This is just how we pave the street.
And the payments state include curves and sidewalk compliance?
Not for, we would not be responsible for that. Residents are responsible for that.
Including, correct, correct.
Which is not under my financing or rights committee. Danielle's got to figure out how to get us some money to begin the process. Well, I think it goes back to Councilman, Councilperson Agarson's comment, we need a plan. And this is part of the goals that council, that Personnel Committee has set before me that you guys approved at the last meeting. And I'm going to let the cat out of the bag Thursday morning. Greg's going to find out about this one way or another. I know, you're going to like this one. Capital improvement plan for the entire borough is going to probably be assigned to the company and take it from there with your resources, plus the fact that you've already got the road bodies, you're starting on the, on the infrastructure plan and stuff like that. I think it kind of makes sense to delegate that to your firm to handle that. And then once we have that, and that goal I think is Q3, I think is when it is, then we can start looking at the funding, how we're going to fund these plans, what we're going to do. But in the meantime, we do have some local fuels money that we can, we can use to repair certain things, get things fixed up. You know, there's, there's issues that we have to address on a daily basis. So Greg's well aware. You guys all saw my email about the same with our tracks. That is going to be, and Greg and I are going to be working on that. That's going to be a major fix because it involves our hooks up. So that's not a simple, simple repair. That's a pretty major, major undertaking down there. So there's a lot of moving parts before that. Plus the other option is the infrastructure bank, which is the half prime, end dot loan, that we could probably see what we can do for there. But using local fuels money, there's also the, having the approval done. So, and we can go into more detail on that at another time if you want to.
There's also a practical limitation about how much, we need to burn out collectively and not just, I'm not talking about the contractor, but the weather can absorb in a given few years' time. So if you're talking about doing a million dollars over the year, that's probably a good number, maybe like two. But, you know, we just can't manage, there's a lot of, you didn't tell, if you were to figure out another table, you're not going to sell, but residents do five hundred thousand dollars with a curb and sidewalk. You know, and so there's reaction time and nasty events as well. So it's probably better to spread out in terms of, you know, let's target an annual amount and for whatever duration the council would like to go.
I think our vision was three million dollars, three years, and then repeating that, you know.
Yeah, effectively every three years. So speaking of our financial folks, we can, we could look at a three million every three years with an accelerated pay down, which would allow for us not to budget an amount that we would pay every year. with an accelerated pay down, which would allow for us not to, to budget an amount that we would pay every year, but refreshing the amount of cash we have to use. So, I guess it's something that, uh, would allow for us to continue to set up a program where we're having a new amount of money come to us every three years to execute on your sixty million dollar project number made up. So, that's what I'm thinking is, first of all, I want to make sure we get roads paved this year for the love of God. Something's got to get paved. And I know that we're already in March and it's going to take until June to get money if we start the process now at the earliest. We do have money in reserve. We have money over here. We have lots of things, but we need a coordinated effort. So, I'm asking council, I would like to bring the person back next meeting to talk to us about how do we get the ball rolling? No commitment, but let, how do we get the ball rolling? What does it mean? Let them shuttle something. That would make sense. But I need to know that we have something to work on, a plan that could be...
I can tell you right now, I want to come back to you guys and tell you that I want to ask for a million dollars just to go and do, do some band-aid. That, what we got, I think that's part of like where we're realistically at. That, maybe this year, maybe those, those try jumping around all over town, trying to fix up our, our worst areas just to get us off some footing to start a more, you know, uh, mean line, sort of collective approach.
And how much liquid fuel money do we have?
Uh, I have to look at the audit. I mean, we, we collected this year two hundred forty-seven thousand, so. It should have been on the treasury report.
It's not, it was, so that's a quarter of what we need to do the band-aid.
That's, that's what we were worried this year. That's, so, and that's our typical, and that's kind of the number we were looking at for paying back the, the loans was that, that number, uh, what we get from them. I, I think there's, there's, there's a, a process you have to go through to get it approved and how you spend that money. Uh, and so far, we've been very fortunate and judicious when we were using that money to make sure that we're falling in the liquid fuels roles.
Do they have an estimate on the amount that we are receiving for liquid fuels? How much is going to come down for your, have they estimated that? Think you were at the meeting, too, where they were worried about the liquid coming down.
It is dropping because, it is dropping because of electric vehicles and a few of the other things, yes. Um, and if, you know, there was talk there about leaving the gas tax, that would affect it also. So, because that's where that money comes from. Uh, there would be, there would be problems. Uh, and the more electric vehicles that are on the street, the less that we're going to get.
And they've talked about an alternative, something we should probably talk to them about because if that affects the job.
And we don't have, I mean, like a township has many, many, um, miles of road. We're thirty-three, you know. According to the, the, uh, the liquid fuel map back there, it's twenty-seven miles of road that we have in the borough. So, that's, that's what our, our numbers are based on.
Well, I know they had talked about the, um, fees associated with registration, what they could do with that. And I think we should advocate that they put that back to infrastructure. You know, that's going to be something that we need to find alternative ways of recouping that as...
Because that was a, that was a county fee though, wasn't it?
Uh, it was a county fee that they were looking to see what they can turn back to the municipality. So, I think we just have to stay on top of that key, that they understand the importance of liquid fuels to us. Because once that starts going down, because the initiative is from the federal government, is to have more electronic, uh, electric cars. Um, you know, are they going to tax the batteries or do something like that and turn it over to us? I think we need to look at that.
So, we're going to, I'm sorry, real quick?
Yeah. Just for clarity, the one million dollar band-aid does not include any work to the sewers or to the, does it, does not?
It, it, the one million dollar band-aid is for painting only just to get us past the crisis.
Yeah.
For a limit to a decent place. Right. I think we need to stabilize the worst of the worst, um, and then move forward with it. You know, did you look at already, we're talking about Keller Street and church, you know, right there, there's three million dollars on, um, so it's...
It was kind of local, right?
You know, I mean, it's crazy.
So, those, those need sewer, right? That, those are just where...
Those are ju, yeah, we're talking about a million dollars of, of just roadwork on each of those areas, so.
So, what we're looking for from councils ahead now, so that we can gain knowledge, so that we can make an intelligence, you know, education. So, he can tell us for three million dollars what it's going to cost us over what period of time. We can talk about it. We can always say that, but at least we've got the information. So, do I have a head nod from everybody? Okay. Well, do we have, commit Roger next meeting? You want PFM next meeting? Yes, please.
Do we have that committee or do we want to have that next meeting?
I know you'd rather it be in the committee, but I'd like to move the ball down the field. It's March fifteenth. If we wait till the committee, it's April something or another. Can we do it earlier than the meeting perhaps?
Let's do it on the council, like, we'll do it on the fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, just had two more, uh, quick things. One is, um, one of our residents has proposed to subcommittee for the finance committee. I want to get with some folks to talk about that before we bring it up in, in, uh, open court. But I just want to acknowledge the fact that that was asked for. And lastly, there was a, a request from the residents committee from the DMP for some language to help them apply for grants whereby the council is supporting their effort. And we've already, a number of years ago, voted to support that effort, but they would like some language. Uh, I was asked to provide the language. I felt like I needed to bring it to, through the committee, to the council just to make sure you're comfortable with it. Uh, they are, uh, applying on the fifteenth, two weeks from now, for their first grant. That's what is due in. So, in, we were waiting until the fifteenth. I was hoping to be able to offer, to ask, uh, Dr. Drake to put together some language and I would push it to the entire council via email for a head nod or tweeting. And I can give a, that being okay with you all.
But you're not asking us for an official resolution?
No, I would ask for a resolution down the road, but not for this.
Not in this situation.
Anybody have any issues with that? You guys okay with it down there?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. I think that's all I have.